Hey Greg.
This should be somewhat quick today. I see Kathy's here, Leif. Who else do we have?
I'm here, Joe.
Joe. Great.
Kevin. Kevin.
Kevin's here. Great Kevin, thanks for coming. I got a late call, Nathan can't make it, so we'll be fine, but Leif will not be here. So it's 7:01, we'll call the February 25th, 2021 Planning Board meeting in order. And we had Verizon and Butternut Senior Housing as work sessions last Tuesday. Anything scheduled for the next meeting?
Yes, we just have one on the 9th, March 9th, and that's Project Orange.
What is it?
Project Orange.
Project Orange, oh.
Yes, for the science.
For the science, okay, that's good. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make it.
Leif, second?
I'll second, I'll second.
Joe, thank you. And all in favor?
Leif, hi.
Hi.
Kevin, I see Kevin, I got a yay, I got a yay from Leif.
Doug, aye.
Kathy, aye.
Kathy? Do you want to mute yours, Kathy, again, if you could? Thank you.
Peter, can I ask a question on the, on the meeting minutes? That talks about the open meetings law and continued virtual meetings?
Yes.
Are there any updates on, on how that's going to play out in the future?
I think it's, it's a point of discussion.
Okay.
I think we should, we should put that on Tuesday's meeting. Nick, would you please, this is one of our agenda items for that particular meeting?
Okay, for the work session?
For the work session, yes.
Okay, will do.
Thank you. Thanks Doug. So we got all in favor, did everybody vote yes? Doug, that was a yes too?
Yes.
Okay. So that was unanimous, and the first is McDonald's Thompson Road signage. Stephanie, did you get the corrected plans?
No, I didn't. Actually, Nick was in touch to inform us that that had not been, that that project had been removed from the planning board roster. I see that somebody's sharing a screen right now. I didn't realize this was...
It looks like that might be Kevin's, and his hand is also raised in the chat.
Okay.
Yeah, I learned about the hand in the chat the other night. Who would have known?
Thanks Kevin.
Thanks Kevin. Okay, so that's off, is that being tabled? Give me the correct procedure there, Jamie.
Jamie, you're muted. I also think that Nick had the latest on that one.
Yep.
All right.
Nothing Nick.
Yep, so they are planning to resubmit Monday, and they're going to resubmit some plans for us to review.
Okay, so that's on them, no problem. How about the plans for the Pinsky Law Office, which actually looks very, very nice? Did you get the corrected lighting?
So there were no corrections that were issued for this one just yet. What had been requested was a site plan application to support the materials that were reviewed, and that had come through earlier this week. So it looks like Craig Polhamus is here to represent the project. Hi Craig.
How are you doing everyone?
Good, thanks.
Hi Craig.
My pleasure.
Would you like to walk us through the plans? I mean, this is the best I could do from the submission, is just to have the layout here with the foot candles showing, but maybe you could give us an update on the construction and talk about the lighting proposal?
Sure. Construction is progressing very nicely. I hope everybody has been able to drive by and take a look.
Yes, it's gorgeous.
As we get closer, I should also say that Brad Pinsky is also online here, so he may want to interject at any point, because a lot of these changes are from Brad and Nicole Pinsky, looking at, you know, lighting options and wanting to make a few changes. So that's why we're here tonight, simply to kind of go over some fixture changeouts and some security lighting that they would like to have around the perimeter. So this shows the photometric analysis of the additional wall packs, the security lighting, as I mentioned. And if you want to move towards the end of the application, it's a little bit easier to understand if we can kind of go down to the last couple pages. At the, at the very end, there should be a 11 by 17 inch marked up sheets A102. It's at the, should be at the end.
I don't have that in the set.
Huh. Check if it's in maybe at the beginning then. Yeah, so in terms of completeness, we have cut sheets of each of the fixtures that have been selected. And in summary, oh, there we go, just up a little bit more, one more above that. And it may be on the side, but yeah, there we go. You can scan it down.
Yep.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Well, it's upside down, so just...
Upside down.
It's in one or two more turns here.
It's such a minor change, I think everybody will get the gist of this. There's, and it was easier just to highlight the changes to the original. So like, for example, yep, that's good to pull that up. We had three downlights in the back. We would like to add two lanterns on either side of the door. Again, this is the back facade, and a hanging light in the porch area, replacing one of the downlights. Yep. And then in the front, we had only one downlight in the soffit. That would be changed to the same hanging light fixture. And then if we go up one more sheet, it shows the additional, yep, if you go up one more, yeah, there we go. That shows two additional downlights in the front soffit, just to get a little bit more light in the, the front facade. And then these series of wall packs, which really is what the photometric reflects. And those are placed around the facade. They're very minimal looking eight by eight LED fixtures that pretty much wash downward. The one side next to that retaining wall is pretty close to the property line, so, you know, we did have some very minor spillage, but it's spilling out onto the retaining wall and the adjacent parking lot.
Are they all dark sky compliant?
Yes, they're all dark sky compliant. And I should mention that the hanging light fixtures and the fixtures that are under the porch or under the soffit, they have an adapter to make them night sky compliant. And that's shown in each of the fixture selections.
Correct me if I'm wrong, isn't there a ramp in the back?
Yeah, there is, but this is a reflected ceiling plan, so you're looking up?
No, understood. I'm just wondering, it seems like you might be a little bit light on foot candles for the ramp.
Good point, probably if we go to the photometrics, it would, it might show better. Yeah. It's the front of the property there, you can see the ramp superimposed very lightly. So we have about approximately, you know, two foot candles on the ramp. It varies. So it should be enough to navigate it. Again, they're not expecting to be open after hours very much. So it's probably not going to be a major issue, but it is a very good point.
Stephanie, I believe that's the old lighting plan, I think the one just above that.
Yeah, that's the old one.
Okay, I didn't think that the other one had a great version of the ramp on that.
Okay, I got you.
So I can't make it out from here.
I stand corrected, the lighting at the ramp is now up to four foot candles.
Right, I was gonna say, the new fixtures that you have through here, I know that it was within the lighting design guidelines chart that we had. So yeah, this is actually the highest illumination for the site through here, but it does still meet codes. Yeah, what does not meet code, and what you just referred to, was the spillage onto the adjacent property. And that, that's not something this board can approve. You know, occasionally there's some tight areas where you'll see like point one, point two, that's allowed, but this one, I mean, you've got, you're over a foot candle through here. I mean, what is the purpose of lighting the side of the building, I guess is my point? What, what needs to be?
As I understand it, it's for security purposes. Brad, you might want to chime in, because this was driven by your selection.
Are there, are there doors or windows?
No. Clearly, we were just concerned that somebody would try to navigate below their parking lot and our building, and would, you know, it's pitch black. There's no, there's no lights there whatsoever, there's no lights from the other building shining in. So it's just a pitch black area. Right now, that retaining wall, which is falling apart onto our land, is extremely dangerous. There are rocks everywhere falling from their land onto ours. And hopefully, one day, if we can resolve this, there will be a better, safer retaining wall. But there's still, you know, a lot of danger just to navigate that four foot, which now is only 1.5 feet, but hopefully at some point, we'll return back to four and a half feet. But we just think it's pitch black there, and there should be something to allow people to navigate.
Could you clarify what the, you're saying four feet or 1.5 feet? I don't follow that.
I think it's the fallen rock.
Yeah, the retaining wall, we've now seen over the last 20 years, now that we have surveys from the last two decades, has pushed itself out by two and a half feet onto our property due to hydrostatic pressure. It's now come within a foot and a half of our building. The rocks have actually fallen onto our building. This is a subject of litigation in courts right now, trying to get them to repair their wall and remove it from my land, so it's not falling into the building anymore. But whether it's now or later, it's, there's no light there whatsoever. So there, there needs to be some light. I don't know, Craig, whether we could have come up with any shallower lighting to reflect, you know, in a narrower path, but there's got to be something on that side of the building.
I guess I don't disagree, I don't disagree if your logic makes sense. I would ask, what, what, what would be safe there? To Stephanie, would you know, or any of our architects know what level of lighting would be safe?
Seems to me that if you can get some sort of, almost like a step light or something down low.
Reverse, reverse do it.
Yeah, yeah, and you'll get, you'll get spread onto the, onto the, onto the ground, but less over the property.
I think my question revolves around, you know, lighting for the building to transition the space versus lighting for security. They mean two different things, and from a lighting design perspective for me. You know, what is the, the low level step light kind of program? There's all kinds of good stuff out there for keeping the light down low, that lights a pathway. But if we're trying to say, we're trying to keep, you know, people who just wander back there, make it not comfortable for them to do that at night, then another way might be to consider reverse lighting it from the ground up with a shaded fixture that is pushing light onto the building, so if somebody's walking between the fixture, the wall and the fixture at the wall of the building, they are highlighted, so they wouldn't want to go there. So there's two ways to think about what the biggest concern is.
Right, from a code standpoint, the minimum recommended lighting ratio through here is, it's 0.6 foot candles, so what's shown is about, you know, seven and a half to seven.
Yeah, it's right underneath the wall packs, yeah.
Right.
It's always gonna be hot there.
Right, and I'm guessing that it's going to be a hotspot a little bit further out on top of the, on top of the walls. It's really tight right now.
Yeah, my question Craig is on the, on the photometrics. The perimeter on that side, would that take out an elevated plane to indicate the height of the wall?
I honestly don't know. This was done by our consultant, Dick Cunningham, who sends this out. I believe it's engineered for a static plane based on the elevation of the light fixtures. So in fact, it's, it's hard to determine.
Okay, let me, let me ask a question. Let's, let's get to the other three sides. Are the other three sides compliant?
They look good.
Yep, yeah, those are fine.
Could, could we, Brad, would you be comfortable if we could approve the, the lighting on all the sides, but the one closest to that fallen wall? And have you come, you don't have to come back so much to the planning board, but submit something that would, we could look at and we could make a determination on?
I, I was gonna...
Yeah, I'd be very happy with that. We, we've wired everything now, so, you know, if it had to be capped for the moment or anything, that, that would be fine.
But from, it would also be helpful to have, well, it's a requirement to have the wall packs shown on the building elevations, just to show the sequencing, the colors, the heights, and have them dimensioned. That's, that's something that we'll need to see to review further.
All right, we can, I'm comfortable with that as part of the resolution, Jamie, that they submit the plans and that they meet our consultants and development planning staff administration before I sign the plan, before I sign the approval.
Okay.
Is that okay with you, Brad?
Yeah, that'd be great. I very much appreciate the combination.
Yeah, there might be also a linear fixture too, that has a higher, sharper cutoff that keeps that light level from creeping as much too, versus wall packs?
Sure.
Their retaining wall, that part is between five and seven feet, five and six feet. So, you know, we could probably take a good guess at how high it can or can't be once.
Okay.
Are we going to approve, is it fair to say we're approving the, the number of lights and the location?
Right, here's the picture of the site here.
But the side, whatever that is, is at the western side of the building?
So is it only the western side, then we're, we need?
Yeah, we need a mediation.
Okay.
Was there anything else, Stephanie?
I'll check my notes here.
I would, I would throw out something as far as the, unintentionally, I think Brad probably did the next door neighbor a favor, considering that there's no lighting in that portion of the parking lot, they've just helped.
Yeah. That's their concern.
They can backcharge you, Brad.
We don't need a counter lawsuit for Brad.
Yeah, I'm hoping someday they'll be back in front of you asking for revisions to retaining walls.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's our hope too. Okay, Stephanie, did you find anything else?
No further comments.
Okay, so I'm in a motion to approve the lighting as presented with the exception of the two things. One, that they redo and submit for administrative and subsequent planning review, but not, wouldn't have to appear on the agenda at a meeting. And the, and that they also put elevations with the, the light locations and specific lighting packs that are going there.
This is Kathy, I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Leif, aye.
Doug, aye.
Joe, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Yep, Kathy, aye.
Peter, aye. Unanimous. Thank you Brad. Keep up the good work, it's a beautiful improvement.
Brad, and I just got to commend you on hiring architectural talent for when my neighbors, who don't notice much architecturally, notice your building in this state right now and make comments on it to me, that's a very good thing.
Al, thank you so much. We, Nicole and I are both extremely excited to be part of the Duett landscape and hopefully beautify a little bit of that area.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
That's great. Thanks for work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last item is the Butternut Creek Senior. It's, we're gonna request an informational public hearing for site plan review, proposed construction of a senior housing complex, and recommendation of zoning change from residential R2 to R3. What do we need to do, Jamie? Is there anything more?
No, you pretty much said it, so a motion that covers what you just said, and a date and a time.
I make a motion. This is generally, would we be, how much time do we need in order to get this publicized?
We can do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
If, we don't have anything pressing.
Okay.
Or even if we do have something pressing, we can do it.
Sorry, is there anybody here other than Leif, applicant here? I'll assume that it's okay. If not, we can always table it for another meeting, but let's schedule it for the next meeting.
Are we requesting?
I have talked with the ownership group, they are fine with the next meeting.
Okay.
And will engage the neighbors prior.
All right.
Are we requesting that notices be sent to adjoining neighbors?
Yes, all the neighbors.
Okay.
And I would, I would ask the applicant, Mark or Andy, I'll leave this up to you, relative to if, if they want to reach out in any way with any other informational beforehand, that that would be probably appreciated and helpful, but that's up to their own discretion.
Yeah, they will be firing the neighborhood and offering an informational meeting prior to the informational meeting at the Encelis Building sometime prior to the 11.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's always been a good, a good procedure on these kind of projects, I think with COVID. For us to have this in a Zoom meeting is, is going to be, you know, better for people who might want to attend.
Yeah, but that gives them a double shot, and it talks about your commitment to the project. And there's a lot to be committed to and commended personally. I'm excited. I don't think any further business, that's the full agenda.
So we're going to do it at what time?
Oh, I'm sorry, the March, the next meeting, and we'll do it at 7:05.
Thank you.
Do you need a second?
Do you need a second?
I think you do.
Joe? We need, I made the motion. Joe, you second it?
I second it, yep.
Okay, all in favor? Excuse me, Leif, you have to recuse yourself.
I have a case, yep.
Kathy, aye.
Joe, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Peter, aye.
Doug, aye.
Unanimous. Looking forward to that project and, thank you all. Have a warm, safe weekend and
Peter, I have...
The work you're doing.
I have a couple of quick questions.
We got time.
Won't take a lot of your time. Number one, I guess is to Jamie. Jamie, this is going to go in the paper?
It will.
Okay, do we have a, like a radius of the property that we want to notify?
I mean, we usually do 500 feet radius.
Okay, we can get that prepared and get that going. The other thing was on a different project, this was the Geiger.
You want me to, you want me to do the notice though, right, and send it off to Angela or to you?
Lost him.
Yes.
Yeah, Jamie, this is Nick. If we could just do what we typically do, that'd be perfect.
Yep, I'll, I'll send it to Angela, you may want to help her with that.
Yep.
But she usually gets it, fine, okay.
Thank you, thanks Nick. Perfect. Yep, Peter, oh, here's, he's back.
Are you going Nick?
Yep, Andy, are you back?
Yeah, I'm back, I'm sorry, apparently I froze up here. One other thing with the, the Geiger resolution, or recommendation to the ZBA for the height. I did talk to Joe Cavender, and they went back to their franchise, and they, they got permission to drop down that front portion, the elevation portion, down to 25 feet 10 inches, which is the lowest that they said they would go. I'm not sure what our, I think our recommendation was for 26, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe it's 25.
25? 25. I'm sorry, the other way. Ours was for 25, they went for 25 10. Is this, can this be something that we amend our resolution, or do we have them go forward with their?
I'm, I'm okay, Andy, I'm okay, but I wanted to hear from the rest of the board.
Yeah.
That was a question.
I'd just like to see the elevation.
So they're asking...
Leif, I'll bring up the elevation.
Yeah, please.
So they're asking...
They started off at about 28 feet, I think.
Yeah, I think so, 27 plus.
Yeah.
What's the Nissan, the car dealer down the road, what's their stick up, if anybody knew? I know their, their parapet sticks up as well, but...
I'm not sure what they are, but they're actually on the Village side. I guess my question is, if we're talking about 10 inches, they're asking us to, to offer some additional relief for 10 inches, but do we have to reapprove it? Why not?
We would have to do a motion, I, just, we could amend it tonight.
Yeah.
The ZBA hasn't met yet, correct?
No, they're, they won't meet, I mean, we can even do it next time, and I know, and Andy just found out, but it would be a simple amendment if we want to do that, tonight, I motion.
They're gonna be, we did meet and we tabled, they're going to be meeting at the 15.
So we have one more meeting if we want to keep jawing about this more.
I don't, again, I just referring to the whole board.
So, sorry, could you just cap one more time? The, the recommendation was for 25 feet, and they would like to go to 25 foot 10.
Yes.
And is that, is that what this drawing represents, Stephanie, or is this the old drawing?
No, this is the, the initial submission.
Okay.
So there haven't been any modifications made to this. This is showing 28 feet.
28, yep.
And we had assumed that by knocking it back to 25, it would take it back, like this whole top course would be removed.
We had picked the line, so I'm just looking at, at the five foot, call it a five foot nominal step above this top of steel line. And they're bringing it down two foot two, so that's 65%.
I wonder if they're trying to find and match up to that panel joint.
Yeah, and you know, honestly, I'm after them trying to align with something that makes sense. So if that's the magic of it all.
Yeah, I think maybe we asked for them just to give us that update, because if it's, if it's keeping within the model, it helps to cut.
That's better than an arbitrary number.
Yeah.
So do you want to table it, or do you want to approve it pending that they're, they will do, that that will match up?
I'd approve it pending a, you know, a final, you know, a final submission of an elevation for confirmation. Otherwise, I think it's fine.
What, what do you mean, what do you mean, Leif?
In other words, I think their desire to keep it at 25 10 is absolutely fine. Pending, we would want to see it at some point in a, in an elevation, just to show that, how they handled their, their panel work.
And I don't, listen, I don't want to beat this dead horse. We do have one more meeting, do you want to ask them to submit it, and then we'll approve it?
There's time, just say yes, we, we do not have an issue with it, but we do want to see it in an elevation.
Okay, and then we, if they can get that to us, we can do this motion, put it on for next time.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks everyone. Peter, I do have, Peter, I have one more item. The Craddock Drive project, we're trying to schedule a work session next Thursday or Friday, if the board is amenable to that.
Yeah, I'm amenable to that. I, I saw everybody's weighing in, I probably have one of the more flexible schedules next week. So what, what was the... So what, what was the, the tenor of the board?
It, it seems like everyone has responded so far except Doug and Stephanie, and I don't want to put you guys on the spot if you need some time to review your schedules.
Yeah, it's, it's the same to me, so I just refer to the board.
Sorry, I need to look at my calendar. I haven't, I haven't even seen.
Well, just, so Stephanie and I are flexible. Doug, if, if you can, what was the one was, was that everybody was meeting?
It was Thursday or Friday. So let me see, Thursday the fourth or Friday the fifth, both times at 8:00 AM.
All right. So I think people were flexible. Whatever, Doug.
If, if we can do that, you know, keep it on the Thursday, kind of keeps us in our rhythm on a Thursday morning.
I can do Thursday morning. You said, I'm sorry, you said March.
Or next week.
Or.
Next week.
Yeah, I'm free. I'm free that morning.
Great, perfect.
I talked with Ed Keppler today about it and there was some conversation about phasing issues there. He implied to me that there was going to be no phasing. It was good. They were going to go for the whole thing.
Okay. They got some work to do then.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
Thank you. Nick, is that it? Andy?
I'm all set.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Have a great weekend. Everyone, thank you for your, 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 your work.
Likewise.
Very.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Peter. Kathy, you got it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Kevin, I got Kevin. Okay.
Aye.
Thank you all. Good night.
Take care. Good night.
Good night.